Twenty-two, for the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, we're going to actually start with item one B, which is the Indiana University Agreement Regarding Jail Experience Survey. I don't know who would like to start.
I will start. I would say in the packet, there are a couple of items and in the cover sheet that indicates that there were going to be some changes. I think as far as the changes to the agreement itself, I think you look at item nine, non-discrimination, that just includes our language that we put in every contract for discrimination and how to report if you feel you're being harassed and any, and all of those good things that we include in every contract. I think we made some minor changes to the scope of work that we're just clarifying where we're at in our process of looking for a new facility and, but I don't think anything substantive in that, that area has changed with this, with this document. One thing I would say is one of the reasons we were here is because we had, you put on the agenda cover sheet that the ARPA with funding was going to be the funding source for this. And so we were hoping, or we thought that maybe there was a chance last night that that would get approved with the full ARPA package and it would then go nicely with having the revised ARPA plan reviewed along with this contract. That didn't happen. So if you do approve this, I would ask you approve it's subject to a county council appropriation. So then I, I think they can better explain. I mean, the, the big picture is this is a survey of people who are, who have utilized our jail facility or who are on either end, either not in it yet or have come out of it and to do some surveying on how that, how the system works for them as people who have been involved in the, in the system. And so that's what this, this whole program is and the cost of this is eighty-three thousand dollars.
Ms. Holland, do you want to talk about this at the podium there? Tell us about it? At the podium, please. Thank you.
Apologies. So we were approached to give some thought to a proposal to look at how the system was being experienced by users, both those who may be currently incarcerated, those on probation, and particularly those who, who have exited the system and have not been rearrested or were successful. And we'd have to set some parameters around that. I think one thing I wanted to clarify is given, we are looking at developing these surveys and/or interviews in collaboration with the Criminal Justice Committee. We want to make sure that you understand we're saying it will be up to eighty-three thousand. It's really hard to estimate costs because that's sort of dependent on how much of our time it will take. So it may be a little less, but it wouldn't exceed that. And I also wanted to really make it clear too, that we are, we are looking to make this again, because it will take some of our time to work with the criminal justice system and other critical stakeholders, both in developing the questions. We want to use some validated tools that look at domains relevant to, to jails. But we also want to make sure that it's contextualized to meet the needs of Monroe County specifically. So again, we'll be working with you all as far as development of that survey, how that will be disseminated, recruiting folks who might be on probation and, and using some community groups to identify people who have exited the system and have not, have not re-entered. So again, the development as well as dissemination and then particularly interpretation. We want to work with you all to look at the data that's relevant and also work with other, other folks who are contracted to you with you right now. I know Mim and Eric Gardner are both doing some work. So the, the ultimate, the ideal scenario would be to be able to integrate the data that would give us more information to contextualize the responses of these folks as well. So, you know, what has their criminal history looked like? What services have they accessed both while they were in the system and in the community? So I think that will help again, sort of contextualize those findings to make it most useful to you all.
Thank you so much. Questions?
Yeah. When I read through this, I, I wanted to know how quickly you anticipate being able to get IRB approval for this kind of work?
Well, it's been a while since I've been through a full board, but I would guess that was why, I, I know there were some, some questions about maybe getting a little more detailed or expanding this to include more data integration and dashboards, which we're very interested in doing, but we really wanted to focus on getting this particular project through because human subjects full board review takes a little bit of time. My, I anticipate that it would take at least a month before we could actually start doing data collection, which is why I think this is dated December first to include some of our time we've spent already, but also to allow us to begin that process immediately.
And then also, this is, I'm, I'm a real nitpicker. I apologize for this at times, but for incentives for participating, participating for, I think it was some of the interview times when it looked like there would only be twenty-five to thirty people and the incentive would be sort of twenty-five dollars per participant. I would, I saw that as a maximum of two thousand dollars, not twenty-five hundred. I'm not trying to, you know, you've already said that this would be an amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand, which makes a difference to me too, that it was worded that way. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and we can definitely clarify any of that. I guess I would, I would need to look at that a little bit more closely, but I think it was important to us that we tried to provide some sort of compensation for, for a person's time. Again, not knowing exactly how successful we will be recruiting and how many that, that will include, that's variable, which is why, again, this, this amount is sort of up to, might not, might not reach eighty-three thousand, but won't exceed.
Thank you.
I think you probably already answered my question. It had occurred to me that it might be better to start in January, but January is when you imagine you'll start the actual project and December is more for getting through the bureaucracy.
Exactly. I, we obviously want to start doing data collection as soon as possible, but there are a lot of procedural things we'll have to work with you, particularly for folks who are currently incarcerated. So how the survey may work using the iPads that, that are available to them, if some may require paper or somebody assisting them with the interview and who we might include, because I know length of stay is variable. So we'll have to think about and work with you regarding what makes sense. Somebody's only there for a day or two and, or people are stabilizing, it might not make sense to interview. So we'll have to kind of put a threshold on that as well.
Great.
But we want to start working as soon as we can. And I think, I just wanted to point out too, that we said, I think the, the length of time was sort of open, but that, that we would allow a certain amount of time after we were able to start data collection. So we're hopeful. It also depends on what days they've set for full board review in January. And I would have to double check to see if those have been released. So.
Okay. Then one other thing, and my computer just went dead, so I don't have the proposal in front of me. But there is some statement in it about how we might be building a new jail or something along those lines.
I, I had that removed.
Okay.
This initial draft came out, we were not this far in that process. I think it was summerish. So.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I, I just have a general question about diversity in terms of how, I'm not asking for any trade secrets. I just, I guess I want some assurance that there will be a diverse group of people who will be participating or asked to participate. We don't know who will, but in terms of race, in terms of gender, and then, and then to verify that all of that is reflected on the dashboard.
Yeah, I think that's another thing that we may have to be a little bit strategic about with you. The idea particularly for persons incarcerated and, and persons who may be on probation would be that hopefully ideally we develop a survey that's feasible enough that it's something that you might consider using ongoing to, to look at progress and outcomes related to service systems that within the criminal justice system. But I'm also ideally at least, you know, if that doesn't happen, at least throughout the term of this project, we anticipate that sort of being a rolling sort of survey, given length of stay is pretty variable, both in probation and those incarcerated. So hopefully we can be strategic in sampling. Of course, it's got to be voluntary and we'll have to think about how that works, but I think we can track that strategically and maybe do some strategic outreach to individuals. That might help us make sure that we're having a diverse sample.
Yeah, that's great. That, thank you. That's, I just needed that assurance. I, I knew that that's what was going to happen, but I think it's important to have that. And, and you anticipated my second question, which was whether or not these surveys are proprietary and clearly they're not. And that's, that's really helpful for us because then we can continue to utilize them and build on the good work that, that's starting. So thank you. Yep.
I, I realized as we were talking that will these kinds of surveys be available to non-English speakers? And I know that I've used Qualtrics and they, Qualtrics actually does a very good job of translating into other languages. So.
Yeah. Thanks for asking that. We are very committed to making sure that it's available in any language that might, might be utilized specifically Spanish. So that's sort of a policy of our center because we have some rural counties will say, oh, we have less than two percent, but we want to make sure that it's available. Qualtrics does do a good job, but we also have it back translated. We have some native speakers on our staff, which is really helpful. So they take that survey and look for consistency. So I also kind of wanted to point out generally what we do to ensure, but again, we'll work with you to make sure you're getting the sample that you're, you're wanting, is we generally look at what is the total jail population or justice population typical and make sure that we are representing each one of those groups proportionally at, at minimum.
Good. Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion and then we can?
Yes, I'd like to move that we accept this agreement with, sorry, I need to get back to the top here. With Indiana University regarding the jail experience survey in an amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand dollars pending approval by our county council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Anything else?
I, I would ask, and this just came up through this conversation, is this, this also something we would want to add a signature line for the, the sheriff elect or the incoming sheriff to, to sign off on it. So he knows what's going on and things like that. Is that?
I assume that that was part of it. I, I guess because we've been amending this, I would have assumed that that's necessary. I mean, that's just going to have to happen. I mean.
Yeah, I, well, certainly this cannot be successful without the cooperation of the sheriff. And I haven't yet had a chance to arrange a meeting with Ms. Holland and our new sheriff to be Mr. Marty. And I, I think probably they're going to have to talk through a number of things and come to agreement on, on a number of things. And the same, I think, would be true of probation.
That's what I was going to say too. My assumption was that probation would have to agree to this as well.
Yeah.
So I've made that assumption all along.
I've actually already heard from Linda Brady, who's Director of Probation. She's quite enthusiastic and pretty excited about this. So.
So I will create a, work with, to create a signature line and make them part of the clients as the sheriff and the Board of Judges.
And we, we actually are very much open and are hoping to have a meeting with each one of them. Both head of probation and sheriff are critical stakeholders in this process. And so we definitely want to address any concerns and make sure that they understand the process moving forward and are on board.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. It looks like we have Counselor Iverson on Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Again, my name is Peter Iverson on the Monroe County Council, and I really appreciate this being brought forward. I urge you to support it. And the only additional comment I wanted to make was that Dr. Holland has presented to the Community Justice Reform Committee. And so the bodies that are represented there have heard a, an in-depth presentation of this survey and they were pretty impressed by Dr. Holland's credentials as well as the scope of work that's being presented here.
Thank you. Another council member joining us, Counselor Hawk. Good morning.
You hear me now? Molly Smith and Lisa.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Because it, it gives me different messages. I'm very interested to see what our new sheriff's response is on this before the county council would make a decision, simply because this really is in his bailiwick and I want to hear his advice and his questions before he feels like we've just made, you know, a fait accompli around him. I'm looking forward to meeting with him and seeing what his thoughts are.
Right. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on this item? We'll come back for a vote on all those in favor of approving the agreement with IU regarding jail experience surveys. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. We're going to have to ratify this at a subsequent meeting and we'll have more clarity as well by then. So thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate the opportunity and we're very much looking forward to the work.
This is a great thing. So thank you.
I think it really helps shape a lot of our future thinking.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Next, we have the ARPA policy revision following the meeting with the county council last night. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, I have prepared a draft and if you approve it, then it's no longer a draft, but the policy revision number four, I'm going to go through the changes that have been made since policy revision number three. The first item that was changed in the policy and all these changes are in the priorities that are, and that these priorities are to be funded pending council approval and proper agreements. If necessary, I think that section of this document is where all the changes have been made. Change to one revenue replacement. We wanted to make it clear and, and ensure transparency that the, by adding the language at the end of that paragraph, utilization of the replace, revenue replacement dollars is subject to that expense also being included as a separate priority proposed to be funded, found in this plan, which means ten million dollars was a pretty big lump sum that we, we're going to put those projects in this portion of the plan as well before we'll utilize that for funding. And then starting with number eight, we are adding number eight, and I'm just going to briefly reference the, by title in the amount associated with those. And if you want more information, that'd be great. Eight is supporting purchase, purchasing six new buses for rural transit at an estimated support cost of five hundred and forty thousand. Infrastructure support for Habitat for Humanities Sage Place Project, and that is supportive amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Rural housing repair assistance, and that is estimated support amount of two hundred thousand. The next one is for childcare, particularly childcare, financially supporting the work of IB Tech and New Hope's efforts. Those are two different groups, not a combined group as far as I know, to affect the, the childcare in the county, and that is the estimated cost of one million, twenty-five thousand. Support for public health by providing financial assistance for two things. One is for the purchase of four ambulance vehicles for the Monroe County Fire Protection District. The cost of that is one point two, one, seven, nine, seven, zero dollars and for funding wastewater monitoring and that estimated cost is ninety-one thousand. Support for the tourism industry, namely priority improved repairs to the current convention center, which is one million, fifty-nine thousand dollars is the estimated cost for that. Support for alternative energy in the amount, and these are for solar panels and in the amount of one million, eleven thousand, five, seventy-one, I included in the language there that, that would include any kind of thing the solar panel would be attached to, because I know we've talked about canopies in parking lots and things like that. So that amount would include that. Support for Hoosier Hills Food Banks to help them purchase a food trailer and the estimated cost of that is thirty thousand. And then the county employee retention bonus, the estimated cost for that is one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. I am not aware if that number would include the FICA and those things associated with that. When I spoke with the auditor's office this morning, they would recommend that we do include those expenses in, in the ARPA plan.
I'm sorry, which expenses?
When we pay the, the bonus, there are federal taxes that are
FICA.
Associated with those. Like, and, and I don't, I, I have no knowledge as to whether that number includes that. I would just make sure you guys are aware that if it doesn't, it would be the auditor's office recommendation that we, we include that there.
Okay. Okay, so.
You've skipped number ten. It's underlined.
Oh, I, if I did, I did not mean to. Rural housing repair assistance with an estimated cost of two hundred thousand. I apologize. My finger must have moved quicker than my mind.
So I have a couple of things. I, I guess I, I don't know if we have to be, how specific we need to be. But for example, in number twelve, it's not just the purchase of four ambulances, it's also the equipment for the ambulances. Do we need to add that in? Do we need to add that word and equipment?
I would.
Okay. The next one, I have a question about is fourteen, if we need to say on county property somewhere? Or do you think that that's sufficient the way it's written? I don't know if we need to say where.
I, I think if you guys want it to be solely confined to county properties, we could put that in there. If you guys wanted to, I wanted to, to not confine it solely to county properties.
It is county property.
It's okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So, and I would add, then I would put by, by funding additional solar panel installations on county.
County property.
On county owned or controlled.
Okay, great.
That way where we can still talk about the partner wants by the convention.
Right, right, right. Perfect. Thank you. So those two, and then the other question is just for clarification on the convention center. Do you need a list of the specific projects? So there, so the convention center gave us a list of three priority items and this is only to fund one of the three. And if you need the list, I can read the list out of what items are supposed to be included.
Well, if we have a list, my suggestion is maybe we put
Attached.
See attached exhibit A and we call that exhibit A and we put that with this plan.
Okay. I would, I would call it exhibit thirteen A or A thirteen, so that it's connected with, right? And I think we can do the same thing with the solar panels because we've got those proposals from MPI. And, and then the same thing with the childhood, do we need to delineate between how much goes to New Hope and how much goes to IB Tech?
I, I think you've got to understand that with this process, this allows you to do it. It is required, it's still, it still requires agreements between
We're gonna, yes.
And, and all that. So I think between those two.
We're good.
I think you're fine.
Okay.
I mean, I.
Great. All right. Anything else? Yes.
I, I have two questions. On item number ten, it said for the rural housing repair assistance that we would work with township trustees and other not-for-profits organizations. What kind of?
Can you make that and/or?
Well.
Because it could be ARIETEN, it could be SCA. Yeah, could maybe make that and/or?
I, I'd feel better about that. Yeah. And then on number fourteen with the solar panels, will this include EV charging stations, especially for county-owned
Yes.
Vehicles that essentially will have
Yes.
EV vehicles.
The only thing that's not included in this amount is battery backup.
Okay.
And that's going to be an additional cost that we're going to have to figure out. Maybe we put it in the bond next year. I don't know. But, but, and that was only two locations where we wanted to do battery backup, which is showers building and highway garage emergency management. But otherwise, everything's in there. The canopy, the, the charging stations.
Okay.
The outdoor lighting, in the case of showers, north parking lot. Yeah, all of that. Yeah. Good question. Yeah.
I couldn't remember it all.
We just went over it last night. That's perfect. Good. Okay. So are we good?
Yeah, I just want to point out that this is not the end of what we'll be doing. We have a number of other projects that we're still looking at funding and it's just going to take us a little while longer to get all the information we need for those. But yeah, don't, if, if there was a particular project you were anxious to see funded, this doesn't necessarily mean that it won't be.
And on that note, I, I'm glad you said that because on that note, I will say as well that, that it may also be, for example, if things go really well and the rural housing dollars are spent quickly, that, that we may come back and, and fund additional dollars into it as well on future discussions. But the next discussion with the council will be at their work session in January, twenty twenty-three. And so we have a plan to just kind of try to have, have the council members and the commissioners all go back to our internal survey to make changes and adjustments as needed. I'm going to go back into the internal, internal survey and make notes that such and such was approved so that we have that information here and it'll be in that survey. So we're going to have access to it. But, and then right now, the plan is that Counselor Wilt and I will, oh, and then also ask everybody to make a list of the priorities of the projects, not the dollar amounts, just what is the most important project to you? And I included in the memo that was discussed last night, a reminder about what the community told us they wanted. And we're kind of far off right now, I will say that. So, but we can get back on track because this is just the very beginning. So, but we can get back on track, because this is just the very beginning, as you know. So, so from that information, from everybody going back into the survey, and then for us to, our internal survey, and then for us to each think about what projects do we really want to have happen? What's our priority? Counselor Wilson and I will come up with a proposal that will be the starting point of a conversation. It's not a final proposal by any stretch of the imagination, but it's an opportunity then for us to meet in January with the council and talk through things with the specific amount there to at least have a starting point for our conversation.
Well, I would point out that the public survey didn't have quite everything listed there also, so.
That's, that's noted on there.
Yeah.
Solar wasn't on there till later, and, and yeah, so that's, that's still noted on there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, let's see if, and thank you again, Mr. Cackrell, for working through this. We appreciate you. So we've revised this here, amended this here verbally, so we will consider this an amended revision number four motion. If, if you're willing to make that motion.
Well, I, I moved the adoption of the Monroe County Indiana American Rescue Plan Act Policy Revision Four. Second.
And that's as amended and revised here in our, in our little space. Okay.
And I will just point for everybody listening at home and for you guys, I'm going to make the corrections and I'm going to put it on for the agenda next week for ratification, so if.
Great. Great. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, all those in favor of approving the American Rescue Plan Act Policy Revision Four as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. All right. What else?
I, I guess on a related note to this, if any of these things we just added to the plan, I know I'm, I'm working on something that I'll try to get the, the Sojourn House project on your agenda for, for next week. But if any of these are time sensitive and you need to have it on your, your next, your last, your last meeting of the years next week, so let me know as soon as you can. And so I can try to work to get the arrangements.
Great. Anything else? Ms. Birdy? All right. Right. All right, our next meeting is December fourteenth, and it is five noon, and we're adjourned.